Councilmember Power?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Proton, the local board? And Mayor Davis?
Here.
Mayor Proton, who is absent.
If we can all rise for the pledge and invitation. And before we do that, I would like to offer a moment of silence for Mike Costello. He's been a longtime resident of Tatchby. It's Corey Costello's father. He passed today. If we could just have a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. We have Bishop Paul Eisen's member who's supposed to be here to give our invocation, so with him being absent, I'll go ahead and provide that. Our dear only Father, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful for the opportunity to come together as a city council and the city residents. Please be with us tonight and we'll be able to do the right things and get through the meeting and answer all the questions that need to be answered and perform our public duty. Please be with Corey Costello and his family at this time and the loss of his father. I was very mourned, the loss of Mike. Please bless him and anything that they're in need of this time. Please bless all our residents in Tatchby that they'll be able to weather the storm and stay dry and be safe and be careful in their driving the next couple of days. Again, we're thankful for everybody that's here. We're thankful for all that we've been asked to do as public figures in this we ask for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Go with your offer of pledges.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge the
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Keybudge, community engagement reports, please.
Good evening, Mayor Davis, council members. I've got several things for you tonight, but tonight what we wanted to start the meeting with, it's safely surrender baby awareness month. And with that, we've, we're going to ask for the council for a proclamation declaring that. Before we, we go to that, we've got members of the Department of Human Services that are going to come forward. We've also got a video that we would like to display to kind of explain exactly what the program is. So, if you can.
Do the video?
Video, please. And I'd like to invite from the Department of Human Services to come forward Antonio Ferrer, April Rincon, and Jeanette Hip. And also I have Division Chief Andrew Kimson with Kern County Fire Department. And I think Antonio has a few things that she'd like to share.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Antonio with Kern County Department of Human Services, this is Jeanette and I have April. We work with the East Kern branch, so we deal with Mahavi and all the East Kern. So on behalf of the Department of Human Services, we would just like to thank the city of Tatchby for sharing our proclamation and spreading the word throughout Tatchby.
With that, Mayor Davis, I'd like to invite you, Chief Kimson, we'll take some photos up here. We'll get you together and we'll, we'll kind of direct you for photographs. So we'll, we'll start with Maya.
All right.
Key, maybe you could take her phone and have her in the book.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, please.
All right, everybody, and three, two, one.
Okay, and then right here. One more. Okay, and for Pat? And for Paul. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So no, we, I got present something to you. The City of Tatchby proclamation, Safety Surrender Baby Awareness Month. The City of Tatchby proclaims February 2024 Safety Surrender Baby Awareness Month. The Safety Surrender Baby Law addresses the increasing number of newborn infants' deaths due to abandonment in unsafe locations. First created in January 2001, the law intends to save the lives of newborn infants at risk of abandonment by encouraging parents or persons with lawful custody to safely surrender the infant within 72 hours of birth. With no questions asked, in Kern County, there have been 98 babies safely surrendered since 2006. In Kern County, a newborn baby can be safely surrendered into the hands of any hospital emergency room or fire station staff. The City of Tatchby thanks the Safety Surrender Baby Coalition led by the Department of Human Services for its dedication in educating and sharing the importance of safety surrender of baby law.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Great, we got photos. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, you're, you're getting easier, Tom.
And next, Mayor Davis and council. We wanted to recognize our Public Works Department milestone achieved, and we created a video for that. But 1,000 days, consecutive days, that's two and three quarters years without any lost time incidents. It's, it's significant. So we're going to invite, what we're going to do is ask you to recognize Public Works for this achievement. We'll have Tyler Napier and Don Marsh from our Public Works Department here to receive that. But first, we'd like to show a video that we produced kind of explaining the importance of this.
To reach the milestone of about 1,000 days with no lost time accidents for our staff is a huge milestone. Our staff are working confined spaces, electrical hazards, chemical hazards, trenching, shoring, all sorts of things, working in the road, traffic, with weather. Any hazard in the, the trade industry you can think of, we deal with it. So reaching 1,000 days in about 150,000 hours of no lost time, it, it translates to a better overall service for the public, right? So we are here to serve the community, the businesses, the residents, the tourists, people come through our town. The goal is to provide the highest level of service to them. Of course, if someone's injured, that's the first issue as for their, their livelihood, their well-being, their health and safety. That impacts their family, that impacts their livelihood, which that in turn impacts our budgets. It also impacts the level of service we provide to the public. So all those things put together, you reach 1,000 days, you know you're protecting your employees, and you're protecting the investments that we have in the staff. And we're also able to provide the highest level of service to our community as possible.
So from an outsider's point of view or a consultant's point of view, it's pretty impressive. It's really a testament to the workforce that they brought into the safety culture that the City of Tatchby is trying to introduce. Especially with the type of exposure they have, the potential injury. But it's everybody's goal to have injury-free operation, but these guys took almost 30 years without an injury is, is a pretty, pretty big feat.
These guys are boots on the ground and they're, they're putting themselves in hard ways with traffic, you know, making trenches, all those sorts of things. And to achieve 1,000 days of no lost time, I couldn't be more proud and I, I thank them for doing that.
Pretty significant. And that's 28 staff members assigned to Public Works. So if, if I could, Mayor Davis, if you wouldn't mind making this presentation, I'd like to invite Don and Tyler to come forward.
Good job, guys.
Thank you, sir.
And three, two, one. All right.
So let me present this to you officially here. Certificate of recognition, the Tatchby City Council would like to recognize and congratulate our Public Works Department for achieving an impressive 1,000 consecutive days without any lost time incidents beginning April 21st, 2021, and through January 24th, 2024. The commendable feat covering approximately 145,000 staff hours demonstrates the Public Works Department's resolute commitment to workplace safety. The team's dedication to maintaining workplace safety not only ensures the well-being of our community, but it exemplifies the high standard of excellence public work staff practices each day. The City of Tatchby congratulates the Public Works employees for the outstanding commitment and contributions to ensuring safety and prosperity for our community. Being in business, this is a very great achievement. You know, I run a fleet of trucks and you just, you just, it's so much, it's so hard to train. You spend so much time training and it pays off with us. So I really appreciate you guys and everything that you guys do. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-contributial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council. Concerning the item before action is taken, staff recommendations are shown in caps. Do we have anybody from the public that have anything removed from the consent? How about council? I see none. We need to
Motion to move as presented.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
3-0 vote, motion carried.
Public comment. Do we have any emails or?
We do have Maria Romero from Keene who'd like to speak.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, welcome.
All right, thank you. Good morning, oh, good morning. Long day.
Somewhere it's good.
Somewhere, yeah, right. Good evening, everybody, from the doorway into the doorway out. I just, I just had a quick comment. I came to my first city council meeting about a month ago. Since returning, I was born in Tatchby, lived my life, and now I'm back. And just noticed, you know, how the meeting opened up with, you know, prayer, just great. But I just also felt to be more inclusive. I wanted to recognize, you know, native way of praying. And so if that's okay, I just, that's what I wanted to come talk about. And in order to do that, I just first wanted to acknowledge my ancestors. I'm Bora Bicha and I'm also Apache. And we are on Nua land. We're on unceded territory. And my Bora Bicha tribe is actually cousins to the Paiute, which are cousins to the Nua. So just wanted to mention in case folks don't know, you know, Nua does mean the people. I know a lot of people refer to Nua as Kauaiisu. It's really, that's the language that the Nua people speak. And just want to mention that it's, the Nua folks are most associated with the Tatchby area. But also want to mention that it's, it goes north to the Twin Oaks area, Paiute Mountain, and into the southern Sierra Nevada. And also just that, you know, they're not a federally recognized tribe. And I just feel like that's, a lot of our tribes are not, and that's why it's not taught in schools. And a lot of our youth and young people just aren't raised with knowing this kind of history and remembering that there are native people still here, right? They talk about us as if, you know, we existed before. We're still here, so just want to acknowledge that. And so the Nua prayer is simple, to the Creator who sits above us and all the good things Creator does for us. Hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City clerk reports?
Make sure there's no more.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Was there any more public comments from the audience?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers. So with the resignation of Councilmember Susan Wiggins, which was official January 25th, a vacancy for District 5 was created. Ms. Wiggins' term was set to expire in November of 2026. So the vacancy happened in the first half of the term, so the council has 60 days from the date of that vacancy to either appoint a qualified candidate to the position or call for a special election. Either option, the new council member would only hold a spot until the next election in November of this year, so 2024. So finish off the first half of the term. So I'd say you have two options. Your first one is to do a publication for appointment to the position. And we would look to appoint that council member on March 18th, so that council meeting. Your other option to call for a special, special election actually would take it to the November election also. So either way, it has to go to the November election. Our recommendation is that you direct staff to publish a notice of intention to fill a vacancy for District 5, member of the city council by appointment. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I was, you know, we, you know, I, this is how I got involved with city council, a special, I didn't want to do a special election because it costs so much. What is the, what, what do you think the estimated cost would be for that?
They tend to, they typically will tell us 20,000, but they don't really know because it's always your shared cost. And they don't know what that's going to be. They can't tell you until after the election.
Well, in this case, there's no special election.
No, either way, it's going to have to go to the November election.
Yeah.
But our recommendation is to appoint until then.
Do you have a map of that district available?
We do not have it. It is on our website, though. Anybody can go on there. They're welcome to also call us and come on in and we'll show them exactly where that is.
I would think that we should do, I thought we should do advertise and see if we can appoint somebody. Save the taxpayers money and then get somebody that shows that wants to be a part of this council to put an application in. Hopefully you'll get a few people with their expertise and their knowledge and maybe we can bring them on, bring them on board.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Was there any public comments on this item? I always forget to do that. I'm sorry.
Couple more years of
Yeah, really. All right, okay. No, I see none. Anybody? Council?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to the staff to publish a notification.
I'll second that motion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
3-0 vote, motion carried.
Finance Director reports?
Yeah, she's coming later and she probably
Yeah, let's defer that. Joan Fodenkort did call me and she said, she's very sorry. She had something come up and she will be joining the meeting later. So let's defer that until then.
Okay. Communication, communication, community engagement reports continue. Maya?
Good evening, council. Today I just wanted to bring to you a new program that we are doing through the Communications Department to recognize women this upcoming March for Women's History Month. So what we are planning to do is to recognize the extraordinary women in Tatchby, right here in our community. So we have opened up nominations to the public, so anyone living, working, or volunteering within the community can be nominated for this recognition. The recognition entails receiving a certificate at the March 4th city council meeting, along with some social media coverage. And they'll be invited on the TatchPod podcast as well, just to tell the community a bit more about them and what they're bringing to the community. So as I said, we've already opened those nominations and we have received 20 nominations since it opened on Friday. So it's, it's really going well. And based on the number of nominations that we received, we plan to recognize up to three women for this honor. But all in all, we came to you to ask when it comes time to decide on those three women, if any of you would like to help us make that selection. So with that, that is all, mostly just information for you all, but wanted to extend that invitation. Yes, so the City of Tatchby specifically, so within the city limits, they, the woman has to live, work, or volunteer.
Okay, thank you, Maya.
Yes.
Item 13.
Did you want to appoint somebody that wants to be?
Because I obviously went, I went 20 applications. I would, I would love to help if that's, if, if you'll have me.
The mayor, you can just, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I, it's information only, so I didn't know where to have to be. But Jeanette has been appointed.
I've been told.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So next, we, we wanted to do another introduction of something that we are going to introduce in March. We're going to kick this, this program off in first week of spring. And what we're going to do is we're going to put together a program. It's weekly walking, walking groups in downtown. And it's something that we identify through some of our community events, part of conversations we have during farmer's market, home tent Christmas, coffee with the mayor, coffee with the cop. Just conversations with community members from time to time, looking for more things to do. And we thought this was an opportunity for us to utilize assets that the city owns. We've used a lot of grant money over past years, putting in walk bike paths, improving our infrastructure, the sidewalks, and providing a nice, safe place to go out and walk about downtown and our surrounding areas within the city. So we thought what we would do, similar to kind of like with the coffee with the mayor. It's an opportunity to have conversation with city staff and we can go out and walk for, kind of like the mall walkers concept that they will have in some large cities. And gives just that opportunity to come together, do something healthy. In, in our research, what we found, several benefits to walking groups, which include physical health, mental health, social connections, connecting to nature, and giving you a sense of purpose and be active. So we thought that this was something other than the cost of staff time to be involved. Everything else, all of the other assets are in place to provide this program. And we would push it out, we're going to push it out via social media, press releases, and invite the community to come join us. We're going to kick it off on March 22nd. It's a Thursday at 11:00 a.m. We'll walk through downtown. We'll start at Centennial Plaza. We'll wrap it up at Centennial Plaza. And then we're going to head over to Kelsey's to grab lunch, and if people want to go over and pay for their own lunch, but keep the conversation going, we're open to that. So we just wanted to announce that and obviously invite council to participate as well. So, but we're excited about that.
So you're walking from Centennial Plaza to the summit and then coming back?
We could. We'll kick it off. It's the Councilmember Phil Smith Trail, and that's what we'll do. But absolutely, we've got several different trails or, or maps of, you know, anywhere from maybe two miles, could go longer. But two miles is something to kind of kick it off and we'll see, we'll see how it goes. Yeah, we hope that the community comes out to participate.
That's March 11?
No, that's going to be March 22nd. First, first day of spring, I believe, is March 19th or 20th. So we thought that would be kind of appropriate. Weather permitting, we'll kick it off then.
Did anybody from the public have any comments? Staff? Council? Excellent idea. I like, I think it is, it's a great idea. It gets people, they don't want to be in a, an area, they just want to be out and out. I have a lot of communications. I have a lot of city council meetings at Walmart, Save Mart. My basketball games and softball games, so you know, it gets people away from a, a meeting per se. So people, people will be more free to talk about what's going on.
Yeah, and we thought 11:00 a.m. was appropriate because our businesses, downtown businesses are, should be open by then. And giving the opportunity, if someone says, you know what, I want to peel off because I see something in Wild Roots, peel off and go check out that store. So it exposes to the down, the downtown brick and mortars and just another opportunity to enjoy, you know, the beautiful surroundings we have here in Tatchby.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you, sir. Item 14, Public Works Director Reports.
And I'll kick that one off. Don and I are going to tag team it.
Okay.
So with this, I'm truly excited because I love pickleball. I don't know if anyone watched ESPN last night, but some of the tennis greats were on ESPN, which displaying their chance to go out and play pickleball. The greats, John McEnroe, Steffi Graf, Andre Agassi, they were all out there playing pickleball. Fastest growing sport in America has been the last four years and it's just continuing to grow. We have a large pickleball player community here in Tatchby. The pickleball players in our community travel to Bakersfield and to the Antelope Valley to play where the courts are. So if this, with what Don's going to present, we think is exciting because what we did over the summer with Chief Standridge and the Tatchby Police Department, we held two pickleball with the police events. We set up six temporary courts thanks to Public Works. And between the two events, we had about 150 children and adults from our community come out and play. Learned to play, and there was established players there to help teach. It's a very social activity. So very excited about this opportunity that Don, and Don will explain much further. But I'm happy to dive into pickleball further if you'd like, or if you've, you've heard enough on pickleball, happy to turn it over to Don. And if you guys do have questions, I'll be happy to jump back up.
Welcome, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you, Mayor Davis, councilmembers. Anybody who's known Key for any amount of time knows that he has extreme passion for pickleball. So that's a great thing. So, so what this project will do is take basically the eastern half of the police department parking lot and do a slurry coat on it, apply a four-coat acrylic paint system to the, to the existing asphalt. And then install four new permanent net systems and then perimeter chain link fencing around the, the courts. So we will have four new courts there. City staff has contacted four contractors who specialize in pickleball court construction and obtained pricing for this project. The results of this solicitation are there. Unfortunately, we only had two responsive bids. And the low bid was to Courts and Greens from Bakersfield. Overall, the fiscal impact for the project, I have the cost estimate there for that. We will be adding a few things to the, to the contractor's bid. We want to add in a little bit of extra fencing beyond what was included in their bid. We're going to add some benches and some portable bleachers in there as well. So the total cost is about $86,460, including a little bit of contingency there. So staff's recommendation is that the city council authorize staff to proceed with the pickleball court project for the amount of $86,460 as presented. And award the construction to Courts and Greens in the amount of $69,000. And authorize the city manager to sign any necessary change orders up to 10% of the contract amount, or $6,900. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Do we have any comments or questions from the public? See none. Council?
I taught pickleball probably 35, 40 years ago and I cannot believe how it's just snowballed. It's amazing. I used to combine it with volleyball and badminton because we were indoors so much because of our beautiful Tatchby weather. And I'm delighted to see how it's just snowballed. It's, it's, it's a good, a good sport. It's great for older people because you don't have to run all over the tennis courts. However, I've heard from orthopedic people that they're getting more injuries from pickleball than tennis. So it's really gone off. It's really taken off, so.
No, I've heard from four or five people already that they're excited about this. And, and not that they're smack talking, but they're going to get the people who they work with and have competitions from their coworkers. And they're, they call me, is this true? Is this true? Like, well, I, I don't know yet. It could be, but I've already heard like in the last two weeks, people But I've already heard like in the last two weeks, people responding very positively.
Were those city people or?
No. No, I'm from the Tehachapi Area Association of Realtors contacted me. But, but no, a couple of people in the neighborhood across from the high school contacted me because it's within walking distance or bicycle rides from their house and they're very excited about that.
That's great.
I think it's great. And I've been, I've been, Mr. Bud just, he's invited me out numerous times, but I just don't have time to start another thing to do in my life. So I tried to get my wife to join me and right now we're, we're too busy. But one of these days, Bud, I promise I'll be out there.
See, and I, and them also, I don't know if you have been out to Bear Valley, but they added eight pickleball courts out there and they're beautiful. And they're pretty full all the time. So I'm sure they'll get lots of use.
I think so too.
So I was looking, I just see you just brought up the diagram. So that's awesome. So it's going to be right outside this side.
Right on your side as well.
Right here. Okay. Yes, sir.
Are you going to do a coordinator for scheduling? Do you have time limits? Do you anticipate everybody standing, waiting for their turn or just see how it goes?
There seems to be pickleball etiquette.
That's what I mean.
That's the one thing of beauty about pickleball is the, the community really kind of schedules itself. And there will be some staging areas that Don had mentioned in that extra fenced off area. So that way, when people are waiting for the court, so there'll be some pat, in, you can, you set your paddles up so you know when you're on next. So it really doesn't need to be monitored.
Oh, good.
The community really takes care of itself. So in all the facilities I've played at, it's, the etiquette is shared. It's picked up very quickly. And it just, there's just no controversy about it. When the game's over, you're ready to step off, get that, take a, take a breath, get a drink of water, and then get ready for your next match.
Yeah. Are we going to have lights?
Just assured, yeah. We're, we, we've got this pickleball court, should you approve it, and also the Valley Park is right beside soccer. So we've had several discussions internally in looking to create a program. There will be no pickleball at night, so we don't want to interfere with the, with the neighborhood feel. But the pickleball court here in the police department parking lot, even though there is a little slope, I mean, if we were going to do this from scratch, it would be, it would be different for sure. But we feel like it's going to be a great addition, just like the Valley Park. But we've got some work to do to make certain that these new recreation amenities are utilized and managed properly.
We'll be designing signage, questions, you know, for, if there are questions that relate to it, there'll be plenty of signage and coordination of how the courts are to be, to be used. And that's standard. If you went to Bakersfield or the Antelope Valley, those parks, there's no one attending, be well, staff that it's set up, there's signage, and the community takes care of itself.
Do you have waiting tables where you could have a seat, wait for turn or stand up seats?
Part of that plan that Don and I discussed in this extra area that he was talking about, the additional fencing with the bleachers, so there'll be bleachers, a couple of picnic tables that we can put umbrellas in at the summertime, so it's nice and comfortable. We've got restrooms and water right here in the police department. So if they need that amenity, they could come into the public, you know, area here at the police department.
It's a great synergy.
Yeah.
Perfect.
But with what we saw, and Chief Standridge could further, with what the interaction that we saw between the, especially the kids, and we're talking six years old on up, the fun, the interaction they got with the police during those special events, all the way up through, you know, super senior ages, it was just a great energy. And I even think the police officers enjoyed it as well. So it was just a good tie-in. But I think having this fit right here is, I think people are going to be very comfortable.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Need a motion to authorize staff to proceed?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power? Yes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Podenkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried. If I want to move back to item eight.
Yes, okay. Financer, Finance Director Reports? I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI Petroleum.
Hey, do I have any questions from the public regarding the RSI Petroleum? Council?
No.
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilmember Power? Yes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Podenkord?
Yes.
It's a three zero vote with a recusal from Mayor Davies.
Mr. Garrett, City Manager Reports?
Thank you, Mayor Davies. Just a couple of quick reminders. Coffee with the Mayor, February 15th, 7:30 in the morning. Change your name again, Mr. Bud.
Mountain Coffee House.
Mountain Coffee. It's previously.
Commons and Coffee House.
So now it's the, but the same location, 7:30 on the 15th of February. We'll see you there. We go. Valley Park Construction continues to make good progress, except for the weather. We've got a couple, you know, when you're in the mud, but we'll, we'll recover. So we still plan on, you know, one June ribbon cutting thereabout. Also this Saturday, I see Claire is in the audience representing the Chamber of Commerce. The Wyman Park is the 10th, Saturday the 10th, from 1:00 to 6:00 downtown Tehachapi. And tickets are still available, is that right?
Yep, tickets are available. We've sold over 450. We can get up to 800. So get those tickets, please help.
Thank you. And then I'd like to invite Mr. Jones, our Finance Director, to the podium while it's coming up. Please announce that the city of Tehachapi has received two additional finance awards. One from the Government Finance Officers Association for the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which is a policy document, of course. It's a financial plan. It's our playbook, operation guide, and communication device that we use to, to communicate with the public. And then also from the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers, an Operating Budget Excellence, Excellence Award. But I wanted Mr. Jones to share a little bit about his achievement because it's quite remarkable, the score we received this year.
Good evening, Mayor Davies, council members. So as City Manager Garrett said, we did receive both awards. This is the fifth consecutive award that we've received from GFOA. It, in order to receive the award, you have to satisfy the nationally recognized guidelines for budget presentation. And as he said, these are designed to show how well that we, that our document serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. So we're proud to receive that award. The other award is the CSMFO, California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. It's the Operating Budget Excellence Award. This is the third consecutive year that we've received this award. We get a score out of 100. And so in the first year, we received an 84 out of 100. And that's about the average for all government entities. They give us feedback. We try to make improvements or additions to, to improve our score or increase our transparency and best practices. So last year, we bumped that up to a 94%. And in this year, something I have not seen in all my years, we received a 100%. So. I not only, I want to thank our Finance Department for putting the budget together, but also all of the departments citywide. It's really a team effort. We researched what we need to include in the document to follow the recommendations. And so not only do the departments submit their budget figures and spreadsheets, they're giving us their goals, their accomplishments, and their performance measures. Any other information that we request, and they always gave it to us in time and manner. So truly a team effort and proud to receive this for the city.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reports? Mr. Smith?
Just congratulations to Public Works, Finance, the whole city team. We're firing on all cylinders. We'll just enjoy the moment while we have it. So good job to all.
And again, congratulations. It doesn't take, one person cannot do what our city does. It takes a team. There's no I in team, as we always used to say when we're coaching. So I'm very proud of everybody.
Me?
Yes.
So I had the opportunity, along with the Mayor Davies and Joan Podenkord, to go to City Councilman and Mayor's Training Academy, which was several days. And it was a great deal of information. But one of my takeaways from it was a city manager who worked very well with the city councilman, or actually the mayor, saying, you know, the great city should have the following. You should be able to communicate with Public Works. I want a check, a check, double check. If you can, have the city manager meet with your chief of police. Check. And they went down the list of what you should expect, and we exceeded all of it. And I, I knew that we came from, or I came from a fantastic community, but everything they were telling you to achieve, we surpassed. And that's the Public Works, that who does so much heavy lifting in our community, the finance. One of the things they talked about was clear communication. And if you can, use social media this way, this way, this way. I'm thinking, we've got Tehachipod, we've got all these events. So I was just tremendously proud. It's one thing to know you come from a great community, but to hear other city managers and councilmen talk about how they strive for this expectation and we're here. I, I just, I, I learned so much, but I was just so proud of this community. And thank you all for all the hard work.
Yeah, like, it's awesome. It's what everybody, what you said, everything. We come from a great town and we're doing it all right. We're learning. Spent three days in trying to learn how to be a mayor, and I think we're doing it right. I think. I know we are. But thanks to Mr. Garrett's leadership and counsel, my fellow council members, and wouldn't be possible without our city residents and our city staff. And so I love living in Tehachapi. I know we've got this wet weather among us the next couple of days, so everybody be careful. I was driving around town this afternoon before, before I got home after work and made sure everything looks pretty good. I didn't see any flooding or anything going on. So coming down Oak Creek, I saw a car about spin out. He had a puddle, was, the water was coming out, and I thought he was going to lose it, but he kept it under control, so it was kind of scary. I think it was scary for him than me, but, you know, we kind of watched it happen. So with that, we'll close the meeting and we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you, everybody.